So I respectfully urge you to consider the proposed densities and when making your decision on the general plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hello there. My name is Amber Ward and I live on Paloo Street and I would like to present a very fun event happening at the Sebastiani this Saturday to both the council and all the public to spread around. This is being hosted by the Climate Action Commission in partnership with so many wonderful local organizations and it's a celebration of Earth Day. It's happening at the Sebastiani, Saturday, April 26th at 1:00 PM and it is completely free. No tickets are required. And it is a documentary that features Bernie Kraus, who is a local legend and soundscape legend in our time. And after, there will be a presentation by Jack Hines, who is with the Sonoma Alcoholology Center. And we will have a Q and A with the director from the film. And it's all just to celebrate Earth Day and Earth Month and everything that is good about Sonoma. Thank you.
Thank you. And since it's free, I would suggest people get there early so you can make sure you get a seat because I think it's going to be packed.
Good evening. My name's Tom Graves. I live on Woking Way, half a block from the Sebastiani Winery. And I'm here to talk with you again about that proposed development project as I have once before. My concerns are not about development, they're about overdevelopment. And I think everything we've heard about plans for that property concern overdevelopment. It's 22 acres, it's the size of 16 and two-thirds football fields, it's the size of three Sonoma plazas. And my concerns are truly about the inadequate fire evacuation routes. And it's become all the more evident with this new state release of their fire hazard safety zones that rank us and the Sebastiani property in the most vulnerable category. I believe the overdevelopment of that property as it's being proposed would unduly put lives at risk, including my own. I also think it would jeopardize the very future of our city. The addition of hundreds of more residents, hotel guests and employees, and the hundreds more cars that overdevelopment would bring has only increased the situation. It strikes me that you, our city leaders, should put a couple of things above all your other concerns. That's the safety of our residents, the safety and education of our students. And that being because these two things speak to the future of Sonoma and of us. You can't allow overdevelopment to threaten the future of the city and we must protect our young people and provide them with the best education possible. I think it's appropriate that those two topics be discussed at every future city council meeting as items numbers one and two on the agenda. And thank you for this time tonight.
Thank you. All right, I'll let you come up. You didn't raise your hand before, but you can speak.
I did not. And I will introduce myself as David Morell. I live on Mall Cart near the Sebastiani property and I'm not here to say a word about that land use decision. I want to supplement what my co-commissioner on the Climate Commission, Amber Ward, said about the upcoming event on Saturday, simply to note that Dr. Kraus will be interviewed on Thursday morning on KSBY at just after 9:00 AM, accompanied by me and by Jack Hines. So for those hundreds of people or others listening this evening, we hope you'll listen again on Thursday morning and thank you, council.
Thank you very much. I will ask again, does anybody else like to make a public comment regarding something that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on and I'm closing the public comment period and I'm moving on to meeting dedications. Do we have any meeting dedications for this evening? So I debated this, but I'm going to say it anyway. It is, I debated with myself. So I think it's important just to acknowledge the passing of a very significant person. And although I am not, I was brought up and went to Catholic school, I'm not a practicing Catholic, but I think that it is important for us to mention. And think of this meeting tonight in regards to the loss of our significant Pope Francis because even though there's many ways I'm sure that we don't agree on everything, I'm sure that we could have had a wonderful conversation about everything. And that he was just such a humble person and cared so much for people and his ability to really live his values, I think is a really wonderful thing for us all to pay attention to. So I think it's important for us to recognize this has been a significant day. So, all right. Welcome. So then moving on to council member reports and comments. Do we have any council member reports? So we will start with Councilmember Ding.
Last Friday, April 18th, I'm the representative to attend in the Mayor's and the Council Members Association of Sonoma County Legislative Committee. During the meeting, basically, and we review and also get updated for different bills. For example, AB 1, that is residential property insurance and wide file risk related, AB 650 and the planning and the zone housing element, and AB 736, that is Affordable Housing Act. And also, we have SB 79, planning and zoning, housing development and transit-oriented development. SB 239, open meeting, that a talent conference and subsidiary in the body and also on the Cal Cities in the position made an explanation. Next one, that is in the AB 346, that is directly related on the city of Sonoma because that is in the local agencies transparent occupants taxes, that TOT taxes, and the short term and the rental facilitators because, and we have the scene, and some of the tenants, some of the property owners, and they couldn't follow the rule, but they still rented the house on the air of the BMB. So the visitor bill asked the facilitator, like an LBNB, need to disclose those kind of the properties, information, parcel numbers, address, and square footage. So now I think this is very important for us, for the city of the Sonoma, to, you know, carry that out with kind of the, you know, the bills in the future because TOT tax is the number one on the city's income. So that, by the way, you know, the, this bill right now is on the state and the senator for consideration, for the reviewing. At the beginning, at the committee and the bill in the committee, at that time, our state senator, Chris Calboden, had hesitated to make a no or a yes. And then the, because I got on a phone call from the Cal Cities and they asked us to support, I contacted with the city manager, contacted with you, and we give them, we give him the very, very clear direction. We support this bill. So the, and then at the same time, Youngville Tom also made a similar promote, called Chris, Senator Chris, so that he changed his position when they ended up vote and at the first round. So the, I, you know, realize, it is very important to realize, our voices should enrich on the state level as soon as possible, you know, when making big differences. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the Sonoma County Transportation Authority Regional Climate Protection Agency to inform you that they're going to have a new name, so I don't have to say all those letters. They're taking out a few letters. So it's going to be S C T R, no, I take it back. I'll let you know. Anyway, s c t a dot c a dot gov still has all the information, but they are shortening the acronym and it'll go live, I think, next month. At that meeting, we looked at a couple of surveys that are out there. And so if you go to S, S as in Sandra, c t a dot c a dot gov, there is a transportation survey on there to inform the committee as to, you know, what the needs are for 2050. So I would encourage everybody to take that. And then I just would like to thank the council and my fellow council members in Sonoma County for successfully appointing me to the Measure H Oversight Committee. Measure H, as you know, is our fire tax that was passed by the voters. And I'll be one of two city council members, joining Jeff O'Krepke from Santa Rosa to be on that committee and looking at how we allocate those funds. So I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to fill my already very busy calendar, but with something so important and something very, very important to Sonoma. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other reports? Yes. Councilmember Gurney.
On the 10th, I attended the Tourism Improvement District Meeting and the report essentially is they are financially stable, they're working on next year's fiscal budget. And let's see here, I think that that's the highlight. And, you know, and what this organization does is they market Sonoma for tourism purposes. And so they work with a number of consulting agencies and they continue to do their work. And their funding obviously comes from the TOT.
TID.
TID, transient occupancy taxes is how they are funded in part. So, okay. I also attended the, on the same day, April the 10th, the Library Advisory Board. And this is an advisory board for our local library. And the thing I want to share with everybody is that they actually have several openings on their advisory board for local community members who might be interested in being involved with the library and what they provide. Their, what came out of this particular meeting from the county is that everybody's concerned about cuts and federal cuts to library funding. And what they assure us is that any cuts to the library will be minimal to them because they only receive about $20,000 worth of federal dollars. And so they don't really see that as a huge threat for them. And they're also, the advisory board is trying to develop some goals for 2025. And they want to hear from the community in terms of the kinds of programs they'd like to see the library provide. And so they're coming up with a strategy to create some community input opportunities. So if you're in the library and you see an opportunity to share some ideas with them, please do so. And that concludes my two reports.
Thank you. And Councilmember Vice Mayor Wellender.
Thank you. I had a chance to join with fellow councilwomen, Sandra Lowe and Patricia Ferris-Rivas, our mayor, to the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association Dinner in Celestopol. I left where the takeaway was, we had a chance to hear from Amy Carter, who is our county superintendent of schools. And she shared some thoughts about the education challenges in our county. And she reminded us that Sonoma County, I'm sorry, Sonoma Valley School District is not the only school district that is having to consolidate, that it's a challenge in many different districts. And the other thing that I found a takeaway was the fact that the superintendent pretty much is a, as a support person who doesn't have any direct influence or authority over our school districts, but is there to be supportive to all the various districts. And I will end with that.
And it was a very good presentation. Yes. So I have two, one quick one. So, because Ron just mentioned the other one that I was going to mention, so that's helpful. So I attended the Sonoma Clean Power Board on April 3rd. And what I want to highlight, two quick things. One is if you are not part of the Grid Savvy program, to become part of the Grid Savvy program. And so people, there are incentives to join Grid Savvy. And what Grid Savvy does is a number of things, is it provides you with alerts so that you know when you're using electricity to help modify your behavior, so you're using electricity at a time that you're not stressing the electrical grid. And this is very important to us in Sonoma, to make sure that we are using electricity at the right time. And the right time is more important even than how much you use. You're using it the right time. I mean, there's a balance there, of course. You know, if you put on a circus in your backyard, there's going to be a lot of electricity. But I do that. I did that when I was a kid. So, but, but the thing is, by the right time, what it actually does is also lower your electrical prices. So that, you know, using it at the right time makes more available all throughout the day and so that we can also continue to be moving towards a clean energy economy. So that's one. And then the second, there was a very interesting discussion because we were setting up our requirements for the criteria for developing programs of new energy programs. And we were working with the unions in regards to what's the criteria specifically in regards to workers. And so one of the things, the big issue is what level of a development would our criteria be applied to? And is, because there's, for smaller developments or smaller jobs, let's say it's under a million or under three million, those jobs are often done by a lot of the kind of the local solar companies that are often smaller companies. And so there's, we're trying to find what is the level that the criteria does not have to be met. I mean, Sonoma Clean Power has a goal that everybody would meet the criteria and meet their, you know, the goal is for workers to have a fair wage and actually be able to, I'm going to say it correctly, so I'm going to bring these notes over here, so that they would be, have a prevailing wage. That was the word that I was looking for. And the second thing is that the developers would have an apprenticeship program. Having apprenticeship program, also anytime that they're, a developer is part of meeting the criteria, they're open to all sorts of advantages around education so we can be educating more and more people that can be doing this work and people that can do this work and have a higher paying job in the end. The other thing is so that sure workers are not misclassified, so that they get paid according to their skill. And so the debate was, at what level do developers have to meet all of the criteria? And I've just mentioned a few, there's a lot of other criteria. So originally, Sonoma Clean Power had looked at, well, maybe at a 20 watt. So that's like a 20 million watts and it's about the same as a $20 million project. And so the unions came back and said, we would like it to be one, one watt or one million. And so the board was able to settle on, because our goal would be, it would be one watt too. But, so the board was able to settle on three watts or three million dollar projects, but with the goal that within two years, we'd be looking at bringing that to one watt so that what we're basically doing is working with all of the developers that are working on smaller projects to be able to be in a position where they're meeting that criteria for their workers. So that's it. I hope I was able to explain that well, because it was, I wanted to make sure that it was clear and accessible. So that is my report. And now I'm going to move on. We, often the next two reports, you know, people come to the meeting just to hear them. So we're going to have a report from, do we have a report from our city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The, just to follow up on your dedication of the meeting to the Pope tonight, just as everyone's aware, at City Hall, the flags are half-mast and that was a direction from the President that came out today. They will be half-mast from today until the interment of the Pope. And so just so everyone's aware, that's why they're half-mast. We also, just as a follow-up to last year, our city party is just around the corner. It's coming around quick. We got some feedback last year about including more people into the process of identifying what music's played at the city party and helping with that process. And so we formed a group of individuals outside and I want to read off their names to let you know who we've selected. And then we will be getting to work on developing that program. So the team that's going to help us this year is going to be Bob Taylor from KSBY, George Thompson, who's a former CFAC member, Tim Curley, who covers music for the IT, Audman Marymore, who was involved with Music in Place, and then Mary Seraphini, who's a current music programmer for the Tuesday Night Market. And so we will be pulling them together to talk about the budget, what the scope is, and then programming of music on, for the city party for a three-hour period from 6:00 to 9:00. So that'll be their charge. And so we'll work with them and we'll report back to the council as that moves ahead. But I want to make sure you were aware that we did follow up on that item. Next, we, just as, if you're walking through the cemeteries, you may know, may have seen in veterans and mountain cemetery, there's some construction going on with some caution tapes around certain areas. We are building new columbariums, both in mountain and veterans. So you'll see new columbariums come in here in the next couple of weeks. So we're looking forward to seeing that. And then in terms of Earth Day, as you heard earlier today in the public comment, Earth Day is tomorrow. And per Councilmember Lowe's comment, there are, the walls are very plain in this room still. Tomorrow, the community center will be hanging the Earth Day photos. In addition, tomorrow, the Earth Day photo contest winner will be announced. So all that will happen tomorrow. And then, so next time you come into this room, you'll see a lot beautiful pictures and we're excited for that. And then as mentioned before, there is a film on Saturday, 26th, at 1:00 PM. And thank you to the Climate Action Commission for their support on that effort. Also coming up, Cinco de Mayo, which is on, going to be celebrated on May 4th on the Plaza. The city is supporting that event as well to make sure that that goes off smoothly. And so we're excited to see that back on the Plaza. And then also, Tuesday Night Market is back. So that starts on May 6th. It's a Tuesday, obviously Tuesday Market at 5:00 PM. I wanted to make sure, announce that because that will be before, right before our next meeting. So that, make sure to attend the first Tuesday Market. There'll be some intros and speeches and fun things going on in the first meeting. So with that, that's all I have.
I'm going to back up just a little bit. But before I back up is, everybody should participate in Cinco de Mayo, just because it's going to be, it's a very, for anybody that has concerns about immigration, this is a great way to be an ally and be there in the park so that the Latino community and the Latina community will feel safe coming out into our park, into our plaza. And then the other thing is just, I just wanted to actually, Councilmember Ding represented this, is previously, Councilmember Lowe was a member of the Mayor and Councilmembers Legislative Committee. And now she is the alternate and Councilmember Ding is the primary. So just wanted to make sure that I announced that as well, too. So that's exciting. They're both very good members to be part of that. All right, so moving on, here we go, to the city attorney comments. Mr. Rudeman.
No comments this evening, thank you.
Really? Such a disappointment.
Sorry, sorry to disappoint you.
But that's usually a good sign, right?
No news is good news.
You don't want, legal comments are never, never the best. Not never, but often not the best. All right, so moving on to presentations. So we are proclaiming May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month in the city of Sonoma. And so I think I have, what I'm going to do is hand this over to our Councilmember Ding because over the years, he's been very, very, very active in this community. And so I'm going to hand it over to him to be able to read the proclamation and deliver it.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a huge honor for me. I would like to read a proclamation for you, Madam Mayor. City of the Sonoma Proclamation. Proclaiming May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the United States was celebrated beginning in 1978 and was made into a month-long event in 1992 to honor and recognize the contribution and achievements of the Asian America and Pacific Islander, AAPI, community. Whereas Asian America and Pacific Islanders in Sonoma Valley have largely gone unrecognized, especially concerning their contributions to agriculture. With the help of approximately 200 Chinese laborers, Buena Vista Winery was built in 1857 as the first California premium winery. After the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882, Japanese farmers built successful family farms and contributed statewide to created successful strawberry and other farming techniques. Whereas Asian America and Pacific Islanders have been a part of the history of the United States of America for over 200 years. Contributing to the economy, culture, education, politics, arts, literacy, science, and the technology development despite institutional and systematic injustices designed to prevent and limit these achievements and the contributions. Whereas through the work of organizations like the Sonoma City Cities Peng Lai Committee and Sonoma Valley Historic Society, the history of the Asian America and the Pacific Islanders in the city of the Sonoma is being memorized. Whereas it is essential to reject and combat all of the forms of the racism, bigotry, xenophobia, and to promote understanding, respect, consolid, solidarity among all the members of our community. Now, therefore, I, Patricia Farah Rivers, Mayor of the city of the Sonoma, to hereby proclaim May 2025 as an Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of the Sonoma. And urge all the residents to join in the recognizing and celebrating contributions and achievements of the Asian America and the Pacific Islander individuals and communities in our city and beyond. Let us honor and appreciate the diversity of our community, commit to promoting equity, justice, and inclusiveness for all. In witness, therefore, I have the therefore to set on my hands and of course, the seal of the city of the Sonoma to be affixed to this 21st day of April 2025. Patricia Farah Rivers, Mayor.
Is Peggy Phelan here? Yay, all right. Did you want us, and Robert Deller's with us, too.
I'm here, too.
Let's take the picture first, both of us together.
Thanks for coming.
Had to.
Good. Sir Peggy.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, I'd like to accept this proclamation on behalf of Sonoma Sister Cities and recognize our 14-year friendship with Peng Lai. We've been through a lot, but we've stayed strong as a committee. And thank you, Jack, for your leadership. It's been so wonderful to watch you blossom here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I would like to invite our Chief Cutting, our Chief of Police, to come. And he's going to give us our presentation on the police department statistics for 2024.
Good evening, council, staff, community. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the numbers that the police departments generated over the last several years. I'm going to start out with sort of giving you an overview of of our staffing. So as you know, you have myself, the Chief of Police, two supervisors as sergeants, eight patrol deputies specific for patrol. We have two traffic enforcement officers, which also double as patrol deputies, making a total of 10. One community resource officer, which we added in about a year and a half ago. One community service officer. Prior to last year, we had two. We still have two on the books, but we're trying to get some cost savings by only having one right now. And one administrative staff, which is actually a city employee, and then four volunteers in policing. And we're always looking for more. They are free. As we step into the statistics here, there's, there's a lot of numbers that I'm going to provide you here. If there's anything in any of this that you want more detail about, we can talk about it. I can take some questions and, and maybe bring some answers back. Obviously, I don't have a mechanical mind where I can remember all the statistics that you may not have asked me about, so I'll try and give you what I can. What's important out of this is if you look at 2024, which is on the far right of your, of your statistics there, we've had 6,705 total calls for service in 2024. And to be very clear, the statistics are from January 1st to December 31st of each year. So beginning to the end of the calendar year, not fiscal year. So the statistics on the, on the far right are 2024. You had 6,705 calls for service. I went back a few years. I went back to 2019. 2019 was more relevant because that was pre-COVID. That's when calls for service were a little more frequent. We also had more peace officers here in the city. We had a K-9 police officer. We had a dedicated traffic safety officer, traffic officer. And as well, we had a school resource officer at that time. So if you look back to the 2019 statistics, there were 9,965 calls for service. So we've had a reduction in the calls for service, meaning that not many people are calling 911 or calling for help, which is a, is a great number to have reduction in. As well, the officer or deputy-initiated calls for service have gone down a good bit. They were back in 2019, 4,194. Today, there's 2,439. When you look at the percentage of calls for service being initiated by the law enforcement or peace officers compared to the number of calls coming in, roughly 36% of all the calls are now initiated by deputies, whereas back in 2019, it was 42%. So not a significant change in the number of calls that the deputies were generating themselves. We look at arrest data. I've only provided you with the last two years, so '23 and '24, actual graphic data for arrest data. The number of arrests that were made in 2024 for adults, there were 137 for, and arrested and booked, meaning actually an arrest was made and they were transported to the jail. So there were 137 arrests made in 2024, and there were four juveniles arrested in 2024. We can also do another option, which is where we cite you. So if your, if your crime is not a crime of violence or a felony, we can oftentimes issue a citation in lieu of transporting somebody to jail. And in 2024, there were 27 adults cited and 25 juveniles. You can see that a majority of the time with juveniles, we will cite them versus taking them to juvenile hall. And then the last thing on there, the detained and released, 849 PC, that's where if you're potentially like a drunk in public type of a charge, that's, that's a nuisance charge, but not a violence charge. Oftentimes, we'll cite them out, we'll take them to the jail. They'll be cited out from the jail, and their crime goes away. No charges are filed. 35 times, we did that for adults, and we did not have to do that at all for juveniles. And if you go back into 2023, the year of 2023, there were less arrests made all the way around for ju, or for the adult side, a little more on the juvenile side, less citations written for juveniles, more, more arrests. So it's just comparable data there. As we look at accident data, I would throw this out there that the accident data that we have are the calls that we get. So there's a lot of accidents, and I'm sure all of you have heard about accidents around town that we may not have heard about because people talk about, hey, I had a fender bender. We didn't call the police or fire because we didn't need emergency services. We exchanged information and it was fine. These are the ones that we actually get called for, and we track. And so in 2024, there were a total of 90 accidents reported to law enforcement. Of those, no reported injury, a majority, 61 were no reported injuries. When you look at the minor and possible injuries, those numbers are kind of melded together because it's based on what the deputy sees or is told at the scene. So sometimes someone will say, oh, you know, my neck hurts. I think I'm going to go get checked out. Well, now we're marking it as a minor or possible injury. The more significant issue would be the serious injury. And, and in 2024, we only had one serious injury as a result of a vehicular accident. In 2023, we had no serious injuries. 66 total accidents, so down a little from 2024, or from before 2024. And then 2022, there were actually 107 accidents total, so the numbers were a little more. And as you go back, it's, it's continuously less and less every year. So traffic enforcement data, and I'm going to include verbally here for you the 2023 numbers because they didn't, they didn't show up in the graph there. So I'll try and give you a representation of how it falls. But the far right, the orange category is 2024. And traffic enforcement stops in 2024, we made 823 traffic stops of those. If you go one column to the right, we're at citations. Of the 823 stops, 108 traffic citations were written. And then one more category to the right of that is verbal or written warnings, and 541 warnings were given. And then on the far right of that is DUI arrests. So there were 32 DUI arrests in the year of 2024. 2023, and I'm going to give you these verbally, they're not, they're not portrayed on there. There were 559 traffic enforcement stops. There were 179 citations issued. There were 275 verbal warnings written, and there were 21 DUI arrests. If you went back to the 2019, and I'll skip past 20 and 22. If you go back to 2019, you'll see that there were 1,243 traffic enforcement stops at that time, so significantly more than today. That was also at a time, and I just point out that we had a traffic enforcement officer that was full-time, traffic-only at that time. The DUI arrests that were up, likely not an effect of the traffic enforcement officer because the hours of that staff member were daytime hours, not nighttime hours. A majority, if not almost all, the DUIs occur at night. And then we're going to go to parking citations and animal control numbers. If you look at the number of citations that we issued in 2023 at 779 to 2024 at 360, significant decrease. What I'll say is that what we had done was, we looked at the number of traffic citations that we were issuing and the cause of those citations, and we realized it was a majority on the Plaza and the downtown area. A largest majority of that was actually based on, on tourists that were overstaying their three-hour time limit. We don't necessarily know that that's a benefit to cite all those people since they're not technically repeat parking offenses. So what we did was we tried to focus our attention on, on the types of crimes that we're seeing, or parking violations that we're seeing repeatedly. And so we did reduce a significant amount in traffic citations on the Plaza. We also started increasing our written traffic parking warnings over an actual finable citation. When we do traffic enforcement away from the Plaza, it's almost always handicap-based, handicap violations. And those did increase this year. I don't have them represented in here, but they did go up quite a bit. We're having a lot more people parking in handicap spots. The last number on there is animal control calls for service. So the Sonoma Police Department handles with our community service officer all, all animal control calls. And the number's been very consistent across the years. You can see it's, it's 235 last year. It's pretty insignificant in change year to year. The only thing about that that might be of importance is that we did reduce from two community service officers to one at the, trying to reduce some, some expenses. And in, in light of that, the numbers of calls that that community service officer has to handle for animal control-related calls has not decreased. So that person is picking up a significant increase in the load. The last page of statistics is our Priority One and our Emergency Response Times. Priority One is anything that's a violence, potential injury damage, like a parking or a traffic accident, or a reckless driver could qualify under there. It's just something that we need to get to right now. Quite often, the Priority One calls will require lights and sirens so we can travel at a slightly increased speed to calls. If you look at the year, over the years, the times from 2024, the average response time is 5 minutes and 29 seconds to be on scene from the time the call comes in till they're on scene. And that doesn't take into factor the time to dispatch. So time to dispatch could be anywhere from 30 seconds to a minute and a half depending on the load at dispatch at that exact moment. But the five, five minutes and 29 seconds has been pretty consistent in the middle from where it's been over the years. So we're not increasing or decreasing. But anybody that drives across Sonoma knows that the time to get from one side of the city to the other side of the city is, is pretty substantially more than that. So it's pretty clear that we're, that we're responding from a central point. So when I'm looking at these numbers, and what's important for me in review of them is when I'm comparing the calls for service, the time it takes us to respond, and the self-initi, or the deputy-initiated calls compared to the actual 911 calls, since we reduced staff in that 20, in the year of 2020, in the beginning of that year, we, is when we reduced a few positions away, is making sure that we're still able to handle the calls as they come in, as we come back from the COVID years, and as calls for service start to increase again. We just want to make sure that we're able to facilitate all the calls as we need to. Having the association with the sheriff's office and the deputies being able to help each other out and respond to calls in each other's jurisdiction is a huge plus for the city because it does reduce these numbers. I did try to parse that data out, and I was unable to at this time, but I'm working on trying to get access to some type of system to see how many of these calls are actually responded to by a deputy who's on the edge of the county and into the city to reduce while there's a city, one of the city deputies is tied up on a call because that, that's a huge benefit. Are there any questions about statistics?
Do we have any questions here? Yes.
Just real quickly, and you may have said this. The traffic enforcement data for 2021 was not displayed, and I was just wondering why.
It was an, it just an error in the display. Let me, I can provide it for you.
I was just wondering whether there was any correlation between 2021 and the loss of the traffic enforcement people.
There, there definitely was. So in 20, let's see, in 2021, total number of traffic enforcement stops, there were 553. There were 111 citations issued. There were 222 verbal warnings provided, and there were 17 DUI arrests in the year, in 2021.
Thank you.
And I was just wondering if those were all the same animals? Because it's all about the same across every year, the same 200 wild animals.
Yeah, I know, and, and I, you know, it's, it's, when you start looking at numbers and you start reading these things, and the, and the number of reports taken on that graph on, I think it's the calls for service graph, the first one, maybe? The red line on there indicates the number of reports taken. And oddly enough, there were 510 reports taken by Sonoma Police Department in 2024. There were 510 reports taken in 2023, and there were 508 reports taken in 2022. So it's a, it's just a ironic number.
And so kind of top line for you, what does this tell you about our staffing? And, you know, kind of the level of safety in, in the city of Sonoma?
So from staffing, I, I believe we're sufficiently staffed at this time. I think as we're looking at trying to ensure that we keep our costs down, but our service up, I think we are well-staffed for that. I think the, the affiliation you have with the sheriff's office being right next door, you double your staff with having them there. So if a real bad call happens, you have twice the staff that will respond to every single one of those calls. They also benefit because you do the same for them, and that's a, that's a huge benefit. So at this time, based on the statistics and the, the fairly even line across the top in all these categories, I would say that I would not be looking at, at making any changes to your staffing this year into this next fiscal year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Ding.
I have a question, just curiosity. And do you have any in the data, make a comparison, just like in the Sebastopol or the Huesport? Because we are similar, these, and maybe you are sheriff, you're going to have this kind.
So I don't have their statistics. They're not tracked through our system because they're not a part of the consortium. So I don't have all their data. I can look at, see if they've made a similar report to their council and see how their numbers compare to ours. I, I don't offhand, though, have an answer for that.
All right, yeah, thank you. Not necessary, but just curiosity. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, City Manager Gune.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in real quick. In terms of the staffing levels, I want to acknowledge Chief Cutting and working with me and staying, staying abreast and being very flexible with staffing. Every time a vacancy comes up, we talk through it, identify, do we need that service? Can we change things around? Can we do different approaches to try to maintain, adjust the budget, keep, bring the budget in low every time? And they've done a great job. The Sheriff's Department's done a wonderful job working with us to keep that budget low and bring in, come in under budget pretty much every year. So I just want to acknowledge that flexibility while keeping these numbers in a very appropriate range. So thank you.
I think the only one last question. So do you see any, any specific concern with the number of juvenile arrests going up? Or do you think that that's just an anomaly?
So I don't know that the number of juvenile arrests have actually gone. Let me go back to that data. The...
Yeah, it looks like arrested. Arrested citation almost more than doubled.
So citations being issued are based on, so a majority of those are at the school. If a student were to show up on campus with a knife, we have to, there's a mandatory citation that we have to issue. If there was a domestic type of situation, they have to be booked at the jail. So like last week, we had a domestic at the high school that we had to take somebody to juvenile hall for by law. So a majority of the arrests that are being made on juveniles are mandated by law. They're not discretionary. The citations, though, are crimes, crimes occur. Citation is the lowest level of enforcement we can do. When we cite a juvenile, we have to release them to a parent. So the parents get directly involved in those, which I think is a very good plus. The school system itself has a very good system for dealing with the disciplinary side, and the, there's a restorative process. We used to use Youth and Family Services here out of the city. The schools have instituted their own sort of resolution, conflict resolution process internally. And every student that we get involved with at the school as a result of Deputy Espanda, who's our Community Resource Officer, works directly with that school staff to ensure that the students are directly placed into those programs through the schools. So it's also another benefit to us that we're able to cut the cost of Youth and Family Services since we were sort of duplicating what the school was doing on top of it.
All right, thank you very much. We good? Okay. Thank you, Chief Cutting, yes. All right, so moving on. We are now moving on to our consent calendar. And so I would like to ask if anyone wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar. And just so the, so the, the public... And just so the, so that the public is aware, I think most of you are, and I see a lot of familiar faces. But the items that are on consent are considered to be routine and will be acted on by a single motion. So we're not going to go through each one of these individually. But therefore, I'm asking if anybody would like to pull anything from the consent calendar.
Yes, I would like to pull Agenda Item 7.6, please.
And just want to know, so are you, do you, are you hoping for a discussion around that? Or do you just have questions?
Probably a little discussion.
Okay. All right. So we will be pulling 7.6. So then at this point, I would like to have, anybody else want to pull anything from the agenda? I mean, from the consent calendar. And so at this point, what we would be doing is ask for a motion to approve 7.1 through 7.5 and 7.7 through 7.8.
Move to approve the consent calendar except for item 7.6.
Second.
Mayor Faris, would you like to do public comment?
Oh, yes, I would. I love public comment. Can we have public, any public comment on the consent calendar? Yes, of course.
Robert Demler, First Street West Mayor and Council. Forgive my ignorance, but I don't know what number, sorry. Number 7.2 means repoint current and at-large and altered members of what?
Oh, so that's, so what we have is on our different commissions. So like our planning commission, our parks and recreation.
This is across the board for all commissions.
Across board for all of them. So versus us having to vote everybody back in. Everybody wants to stay on. Everybody wants to keep their same people on. So we're just going to keep them there. Very good. Thank you. Good question. Good question. Okay. So now what I will do is we will open up item 7.6, which is... No, I'm not done. Oh, I forgot to do the vote. I was going so good up to this point. Okay, here we go. So all those in favor of...
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Aye. There we go. All right. It's always good to have help. So item 7.6, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Planet, Planet, not Planet or Planted, but Planet Geo, in the amount not to exceed $75,000 to conduct a citywide tree inventory and urban canopy assessment. Here we go. And Vice Mayor Wellender, would you like to bring up your questions and discussion items?
Sure, I would be happy to. First, let me say that I fully support the contract and this idea of identifying the value of trees in our city. I'm very supportive of that. I'm hoping too that this will accelerate the planting of a tree or more sooner than later. My concern or question is that like we've received some reports in the past, seemingly have not moved forward as far as any action with it. So I'm interested in knowing who will be responsible for managing this data? Who will be developing an implementation plan based on this data? And again, how you see this investment of $75,000 becoming a return on the investment?
Sure. So to start off with, as we all know, trees are important. And so that's why we established that in our budget last year for this current fiscal year to do this tree inventory and the canopy assessment. The idea is that this is step one in focusing on developing additional policies around trees and policies around where we're going to plant trees. So the tree inventory itself will be a GIS based inventory. So we'll have location based. And with that inventory, it's going to have a number of attributes in regards to those trees, including the health of the tree and what maintenance is going to be required. This would allow for a future Parks Director to be able to identify funding needs to help maintain these trees. Also, these trees are also going to be all throughout our parks. So it's all public trees is what's being inventoried. So everything in our parks, not Montini Preserve, let me be specific. So not the big forest parts, but the plaza and our different parks that we have. So we can use it for that, and it's going to be editable. So as trees are being removed or their health's reassessed, we can edit that data. And so there would be an ongoing cost to have Planet Geo. If we do not want to use Planet Geo, it's called Tree Plotter. If we don't want to use it, we can pull all that data and use our own GIS system in the future. So it is a very user friendly system. The Urban Tree Canopy is going to identify where our tree coverage is within the city, kind of set that baseline, which is a goal for the climate action strategies, is we want to maintain or increase our canopy. So as again, trees are being removed from our canopy coverage, where are we putting new trees in? This project will also identify great places to put in more trees. So that's going to be also part of the suggestions. This information will be then used to create an urban forestry management plan, which I would handhold with the Parks Director or carry over the project to the future Parks Director as hopefully they would be already hired by the time this project really kicks off. We're looking at the canopy coverage. There'll be new LiDAR data this summer, and so we would want to wait till after that new data comes forward. And then will be, I think, August when the trees are in full foliage, and we'll be doing that assessment of the tree inventory at that time. So we're looking at summer, fall for the actual implementation of this project. So it's really going to be a tool to be used to identify future funding needs. Also our policy changes, creating incentives, and also penalties for removal of trees.
Just some follow up questions or comments. So I believe the contract's going to take six months. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I can, contracts six months as far as the completion of the two-phase project?
So the contract itself will be throughout the fiscal year to the end of the fiscal year. So if they do not finish within that timeframe, but yes, they think that it'll take six months to complete the inventory and the canopy.
And are we of the mindset that says we will not be planting any trees until the end, the completion of this report?
I think that is up to the city council to determine when they would like to plant some trees. This report will help to identify where good places for these trees would be.
Thank you.
So I understand that parks and so forth, but will this also include street trees?
So yes, it'll be all trees within our public right of way and within the first 15 feet of residences and commercial buildings on private property. They will not be entering private property. It will be from the public right of way that they will be looking at trees and assessing.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Lowe.
Because I haven't brought this up at the last two meetings about the park on the corner of MacArthur and Fifth Street West, that it's about time I bring it up again, that even though there's no park there now, there's also no trees there now. But I hope that's part of the study and that it's indicated that there are no trees there because that would be a great place to the Vice Mayor's suggestion to start putting some. Thank you.
Any other questions? Because we can bring it back. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment? Very good. I'll bring it back to the council for any direction in regards to this item, comments or direction.
I will be glad to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 7.6. Things how I pulled it with a caveat of encouraging some tree planting before the completion of this report.
Aye, second.
All right. Is that accept, that's, yeah, I hope that's a friendly amendment for us. It's up to us. That's right. We accept it. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wow. Look, we may finally have, when we have that tree planted, it's going to be very exciting. We'll have a big tree party. I like this, but that it's like we know the where, what, and how of each tree that's here. It's pretty exciting. There's a lot of trees here because I know in the plaza, there's over 200, right, in the plaza alone. All right, moving on, even though we do need more trees. Now we're going to move on to a public hearing. Item 8.1, is it public hearing to consider an ordinance adopting the Fire Hazard Severity Zone map and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15061B3, general rule of the SEQA guidelines. And I am bringing Jennifer Gates back, our Community Development Director, to open up this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, okay, it's fine.
You're good. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Jennifer Gates, Community Development Director. So as stated before you tonight, is a public hearing. So the first to introduce an ordinance to adopt our Fire Hazard Severity Zone map. So as required by our Government Code, Section 51179, local jurisdictions are required to adopt by ordinance an updated fire hazard severity zones in our jurisdiction within 120 days of receiving recommendations from the state Fire Marshal pursuant to Section 51178. CAL FIRE provided the recommended map to the Sonoma Valley Fire District on February 24th, 2025, which staff made available in March for public comment. And it has been up since then on our city's website, as well as on the Fire District website. So before you is the, the Fire Hazard Severity Zone map, and it depicts our moderate, high, and very high fire hazard zones in the state responsibility areas as well as our local responsibility areas, local being within our city boundary. The location of the boundaries were developed from recommendations from the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, and it's based on the evaluation of fire history, fuel growth, density of housing, proposed developments, access, and water supply considerations. While the city can increase the severity zone level, it cannot decrease. The map provided for adoption modifies the map provided by the state by identifying the higher severity zone for those parcels that had more than one severity zone. In this manner, no parcels are going to contain multiple severity zone ratings. Therefore, we're going to simplify the administration process and provide clarity to our property owners, regulators, and other interested parties. So no other changes are being recommended at this time. So what you see is the citywide map, and then I zoomed in on a specific area. The top section shows what it looks like with what the state has provided. So it's a very jagged edge with no parcel information. And so what we've had done is overlaid this onto our parcels and then selected what that highest severity zone would be. So again, there's going to be a jagged edge for a parcel. But each parcel only is going to have one zone. So this will be put into our online permitting system. So when somebody applies for a permit, they'll automatically know what zone they're in. But the other questions, of course, are, so what does that mean? What does all this mean? So with the adoption of this map, there will be new requirements to be implemented by the city, and some of them will impact new development depending on the severity in the zone. So Chapter 7A of the California Building Code, which is called Materials and Construction Methods for Exterior Wildfire Exposure, as well as Hazard Disclosures, will apply for all properties within the high and very high severity zones. In addition, for those in the very high severity zone, defensible space landscape requirements will also be required. So these will be reviewed as part of a new development project, what materials are being used, as well as what's going on and presented for landscaping. With the new severity zones identified, there will also be additional requirements here at the city. An example is that now that the safety element update is underway, which is a requirement when we adopt new severity zone maps, we'll now need to identify our evacuation routes and evacuation locations and evaluate their capacity, safety, and viability under a range of emergency scenarios. And this will need to be submitted to CAL FIRE for their review as well. So this is the graphic that kind of shows and was provided with the staff report what falls within the state responsibility area and our local responsibility area at those very high, high, and moderate areas. And we do have information on, that we've linked to our Fire District's website that talks about defensible space and the hazard disclosures. And then last but not least, the city staff recommends to introduce this ordinance designated our Fire Hazard Severity Zones as recommended by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. And this concludes staff's presentation. And I am available to answer any questions as well as Trevor Smith, our Fire Marshal, and the Battalion Chief Campbell and Chief Aker.
Do we have any questions from council? Yes.
You mentioned the website. How is this going to be best communicated to the public as far as all these changes?
So we'll need to, as we go through the process of updating in OpenGov and just making sure it's very visible of what these new requirements are, we will update our webpage for that information. But the key is going to be to continue to work with the Fire District on their space because a lot of the requirements fall to them to implement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a quick question. Can we go back to the local required responsibility, whatever that A is? What is Chapter 7A?
Chapter 7A is part of the California Building Code. So that's where, that's the, what I was describing is the materials. That's the material section and the zones.
And then in regards to defensible space and Chapter 7A, so this is just for any new permits? What does this, you know, like, is there any complying that residents or businesses have to do that are, you know, are just already there and are showing up in these areas?
So I'm going to ask the Fire Marshal to come up to talk a little bit more about defensible space. He wanted to reach on that. As far as Chapter 7A and the applicability, it comes into play with depending on the project type. So it may be a remodel that is actually going to be considered new construction. So it just depends on what that level of development. So it's not just I'm a vacant lot and now I have something new. It's about what you're doing, your modifications, and what those triggers are. Just like other sections of our fire code and our building code, it just depends on the level of change that's occurring. And that includes our landscaping as well.
But so if someone has a, has a house and they're not doing any remodeling, then there's, they have no requirements?
So that's where the...
That's where you're coming up. Okay, great.
Yes, to talk about the hazard disclosures and defensible space.
Yes. Councilwoman Lowe.
Is there anything in there that would prohibit, because of the location, being in one of these high zones, prohibit any construction, any building to go on?
No, it doesn't prohibit construction. It just provides in Chapter 7A for what the materials and parameters for that construction would be. And then also with the defensible space, what those landscaping requirements are going to be for the whole.
So any construction would have to follow any of these, these ordinances? So is there anything in there, any of these in the SRA or LRA regarding providing access or egress for these situations?
Are you talking about egress within the site itself? Or are you talking about in general? So I'm going to let the Fire Marshal talk a little bit more about the defensible space and the hazard disclosures and their requirements. In general, there are some ordinance changes that we'll probably be bringing forward. I have worked previously in cities that, almost the entire city was very high. So it didn't stop, it doesn't stop construction. It's just that in our codes, we need to be a little bit more specific on what is going to be necessary to submit for entitlements and what we're going to be looking for.
Thank you.
Mayor, your question regards to existing city properties that aren't going through any development or change. Things that will happen... Things that will happen in the very high and high is they'll have to comply with the State Public Resource Code 4291, which is the defensible space inspection guidelines. So defensible space within 100 feet of your home or to the property line, whatever's closer, pruning of trees, elimination or reduction of shrubs and bushes that are in big congregate areas. It just provides for safer vegetation management standards that reduce the risk of fire if a fire is approaching, whether it be for embers or direct fire impingement. Additionally, the hazard disclosure element states that if you're selling a home or purchasing a home, one of the disclosures that is now required, if you're in one of these two zones, is this real estate hazard assessment on, is the property compliant with vegetation management standards? It's not pass/fail. It's kind of like a pest report or a roof inspection or any number of other real estate disclosures. It tells the seller, this is the requirement, and it tells the buyer, this is the condition, and then those two parties can agree on how they address those issues. You don't, we're not forcing people to comply. We're forcing people to tell the future owner what they need to do, and then they can iron out that cost arrangement during the sale.
Are there, are, are we providing any programs to community members that are going to give them a better understanding of how to create defensible space on their properties?
Yeah, we have an inspection program. First and foremost, any property owner in the city or the entirety of the Sonoma Valley Fire District can contact us, and we will come out and assess your property. It's not an inspection, it's an evaluation. You're reaching out to us to say, what can I do to be safer? And we pass that information on to the property owner so they understand what those requirements are. On our website, we highlight what all the requirements are with pictures and references and the text language from the law itself. And then a more, laws can be written very lengthy and wordy and often contain words that aren't normally used to the layperson, so we provide a clear text version of that same language with pictures so they understand. Additionally, at our City of Sonoma Fire Station, number one headquarters station on Second Street West, we've just redone our entire landscaping to be compliant, to show a great example to our community of what you can do to make it safe. So the hardscaping, the five-foot non-combustible zones, the spacing amongst the planting, et cetera. So that was a grant-funded project, and it's fully operational and available for any member of the public to come and look at, and we're more than happy to answer questions about that.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Is it, as development happens throughout a city over time, that implements some of, some of these suggestions and regulations, does that somehow almost become, I don't want to say like a fire break, but in other, in other words, there could be, you know, in the, in the event of a, of a fire moving into an area that is newer and has adopted these, is that a defense mechanism in a sense for the community by having that there? Or is, is there some benefit to everyone when that happens? I'm just curious.
I think there's a benefit to everyone. We always like to tell people that worry less about your neighbor, but worry about what you do on your property to make your home safer. But with all of these regulatory changes and the changes that are gonna be occurring in both the safety element, the general plan update, in regards to the building standards, new communities and new developments will be safer, more resilient, and can provide a buffer between those existing communities. So yes.
And yet, yes.
Getting back to Station Number One's landscape, I'm curious, is that an example of minimal planting? Or are you, are you demonstrating kind of the upper end of it? Because I'm just curious, based upon what I see, it's, it's incredibly sparse.
It is.
And, and I'm just wondering if it would have been more educational had you gone to the other end of the spectrums and taken up to the edge and says, this is what you can do, because what I see at the station, unfortunately, is not very attractive. And if you want people to comply, I would, I would, just curious if, if it would have been a case of wanting to do something that one might see as more aesthetically pleasing, rather than just so much non-combustible material.
Sure. I, I took note of it this morning when I walked out of my office, and I noticed that the plants are growing. We obviously planted it with immature plants, young plants, and we designed it in such a way so that when they become fully mature, that spacing will still exist to reduce the amount of maintenance a property owner has to have. But realistically, the ordinances and requirements for vegetation management designed to protect your property wants to reduce the spread of fire from one planting item to another. So if you have a, for example, if you have a five-foot pile of shrubs and bushes and grasses, and it's three feet tall, you can't have anything else within 15 feet, or, excuse me, I said it's three feet tall, three times the height, nine feet away. So you have to have that gap or buffer. Now, we did single specimens of plants with the intention of them growing to a larger, more mature size, but if you had four or five plants together, that's fine. You just can't exceed a planting area of 12 by 12. And as we maintain that property, and as those plants become more mature, I hope that you'll see that it is a little more visibly appealing. But I think we need to change the way we describe or define a beautiful landscape, because we're in an environment now that's changing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's no more questions. I am going to open this up, open up the public hearing. So the public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Donna Dombach. Just to advocate for more and frequent communication about what's just happened here, putting it on the website to make sure that people have all the links that are available, and also potentially as something that may engage people to consider becoming a firewise community, and putting those links as well so people can get engaged at that level. Thanks.
Thank you.
Robert Demmler, First Street West, again. I often hear comments, particularly about the Sebastiani proposal, rezoning and so forth, about evacuations. And I, I may be blind, but I don't think I've ever seen an evacuation route sign in Sonoma. I don't think we have them. I think we need them, and if we had all the money in the world, it would be nice to have signs that are lighted, because there are very few exits from Sonoma City. And sometimes, one or more of those exits may be blocked. So if we had something like a cross with arrows on either end, all around the city, that could be lighted for the direction you should go. But I think we need to at least start with something about that. And about the landscape, I'm sorry publicly to the fire station that's in my neighborhood. Good taste is a curse, and I think I'm cursed, cursed, whatever. It doesn't look nice at all, and I would be very happy to come over and help you spread the rocks around differently.
Oh, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. Here we go, yes.
Hi, my name is Becky Sager. I live on Wilking Way. Could I ask a question, or is this just for comments?
You can comment and ask a question, and then I can, through the, through me, I can ask someone to answer that if I don't know the answer.
My question is, you know, so much of the city now is, you know, in the very high zone, including many of our homes and this building and City Hall. How do you anticipate this might change how you're looking at the updating of the general plan? In other words, this seems pretty significant, both in terms of land use, in terms of zoning, in terms of costs, like insurance rates, both for the city and for our citizens. Have you, have you started to think about how it might impact how you think about the plan? That's my question.
Maybe I will save the answer to that question for when we have our comment discussion period.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, great.
And so, and at this point, I'll see if there's anybody else that would like to make public comment. All right? And if there is no, no one else, I will, here, I gotta not slam that, here, this one. Close public comment. All right. So I'm gonna bring it back now to the council for discussion, but I do think that that is, I mean, it is an important point, that is the time when we're doing a general plan update, and we have the fire map, and we're looking at land use. Perfect Jennifer timing, yes, to let us know what, what is in the general plan update that addresses this.
So that's where we were talking about, as you see on the image too, is, is really about the safety element itself. And so when the safety element update occurs, there'll be more information around the evacuation route, and then I'll be coming in May for actual additional funding to do the studies around the evacuation route, because that wasn't in the budget prior, because we didn't have to do it, but now we do. And so that is where we're gonna find out more information, when we're looking at the element itself, when we look at the results of the study, and then all that information is what you consider when you make your decisions. So we'll look at impacts through the SEQA process, as well as all aspects of the general plan. As I stated before, all these, and other communities that have been having these for a while, this is something new for us, and it's gonna be a little bit of a growing pain, but we'll get through it and with some education and outreach around what this means now as we develop properties or properties get redeveloped, or landscapes get done.
Comments from, did you want to say something as well? Yes, please.
It didn't come up. I just wanted to address the fire insurance component. I believe it will come up, and I know a public comment addressed that, so I'd like to talk about that. On our website, we have a lot of information to our community members on what they can do to obtain and retain fire insurance. Governor Newsom's Safer for Wildfires Act highlights some things that property owners can do and some things that local fire departments and fire districts can do. One of those is being a community risk reduction list member. So the State Board of Forestry compiled a list of agencies and fire entities that have made very significant milestones towards making a safer community, and we obtained placement on that list as a fire risk reduction community. Information on that's on our website. That's one of the items that you can, a bullet point, an insurance company has to look at you if your community is on that list. It's not advertised very well, so we want it on our website. We want our community to understand that. I've also received a number of questions, and some of the public comments were in relation to insurance and how insurance companies are gonna utilize this new map to insure or not insure people. And we've all heard stories about insurance companies dropping people. I've sat in on a number of discussions on this from very learned people in the industry of insurance, and these maps aren't gonna change that. They're far ahead of what the state's doing. The insurance companies understand the risk. They understand the liability it places them in. They're far ahead of these maps. I don't believe that these maps, and according to the California Department of Insurance, we also have comments from them on our website, they also don't anticipate changes associated directly with this map. Murphy's Law says that we'll adopt this ordinance because we have to, and then a community member's gonna lose insurance. But these changes are not designed to affect property owners' insurance. And as a city and as a fire district, we're doing everything we can to help our community members retain that. So visit our website for more information.
So I think it would be helpful just to say just a little bit more about this community fire reduction list, and kind of that you, we made it onto that list, so we are a, a community that has, that's a very positive thing to be on that list. I mean, unfortunately, there has to be the list in the first place, but it's positive to be on the list. But what does it take, I mean, is it hard to get on that list, just so that people understand kind of the significance of what it means for our community?
It took a lot of hard work and dedication and efforts on behalf of our agency to do the quote "right" thing, vegetation management, vegetation, defensible space inspections, community presentations, staffing levels, a number of things. We had to apply through the State Board of Forestry to get on this list. Don't quote me. There's less than 60 people statewide on this list, 60 entities, and only two in Sonoma County, I believe. The list is publicly available on our website, so I don't want to be quoted exactly, but it was very stringent requirements, a lengthy application process, and this has to be done annually. That reapplication period is coming up next year. But placement on that list is written in that Safer for Wildfires Act. Councilmember Ding mentioned that Assembly Bill 1 that's currently happening. There's additional language in there that reinforces that Safer for Wildfires Act when that goes through. So these are things that our community members, when their insurance company calls and says, or they're calling to get insurance, if, if they don't use this language, the insurance company may or may not even know. So we're kind of giving consumers the tools to not force the hand, but to speak more educated to insurance companies, to say, look, we're in this community, we're on this list, this legislation says if we're on this list, we get priority, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you, very helpful information. Thank you very much.
From positive, the perspective.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right, so do we have any other discussion, comments from our councilmembers? Do I have this emotion? I know people want to just, are excited and want, yes, there we go. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept this?
I would like to move, introduce the city council ordinance designating fire hazard severity zones as recommended by California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection.
Second.
All right, thank you. Let's take a roll call for this.
Councilmember Lou?
Hi.
Councilmember Ding?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wellander?
Yes.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Mayor Farrar-Rivas?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
All right, moving on. Oh, oh, good, I don't have to do this again, because we already closed the public comment. Did I do that? I did do it, I think so. I almost smashed that thing when I did it. Okay, moving on now, thank you. Now we, oh, good, we're getting into the work plans. This is gonna be fun. So now we're gonna go to item 9.1. I'm a nerd, what can I say? So, and we are, 9.1 is, we're gonna be going over the 2025 Climate Action Commission Annual Work Plan, and Jennifer Gates is gonna present that for us, and we will be discussing that.
All right, so Climate Action Commission Work Plan. In order to set our priorities for the implementation of our climate action strategies, staff recommend that the Climate Action Commission annually adopt a work plan. So this work plan will be used to formulate our goals and timelines and priorities for this fiscal year. In March of 2025, staff presented a status update on the climate action strategies to the Climate Action Commission, and they identified a work plan for the next year, taking into consideration city council goals for 2025. So the proposed work plan is our framework for achieving continuous improvement on the implementation of our climate action strategies that were adopted by city council in January of 2024. In March, the Climate Action Commission had recommended that city council approved their continued focus on these climate action strategies, which are included in your staff report, with a focus to include the continuation of identification of grant opportunities to implement these strategies, to recommend ordinances to ban new drive-throughs and filling stations, to create educational materials and promote our climate activities, including Earth Day, which you heard about. I put the 27th, I meant the 26th, sorry about that. Explore our reach codes after the release of our new building code, which needs to be adopted. The new building code will be adopted this year, barring any changes with state legislature. Update our cash for turf program, and then complete the tree inventory and canopy analysis that we just discussed earlier as well. Update our cash for turf program and then complete the tree inventory and canopy analysis that we just discussed earlier as well. As part of this and to assist staff in the implementation, four ad hoc committees were identified. And these include a general plan update, so to review the elements as they're presented and look at them through the lens of sustainability. Education and outreach ad hoc, so again, to help us with promoting climate and sustainability activities. And then water cash for turf group, looking at how we've been using our water and with our new AMI technology, we're getting a lot of great information. And then working with Public Works Department on the Cash for Turf, which we had received a grant for that program. And so helping to promote that program is a goal of ours. And then lastly, to look at the budget and opportunities for climate action projects. In 2024, the ad hoc committees were formed and they were specific to topic areas that you would see in your staff report. So one focused on water or solid waste and transportation. They did a lot of research on a lot of the items and that information was provided to you in that staff report. But there are items that are not completed. Some need more information. Some need funding. So as time permits, we'll continue to work on those and look for, again, funding to implement. So last slide is staff's recommendation is to approve the proposed 2025 Climate Action Commission Work Plan. And that concludes staff's presentation. And I think Chair Morrell of the Climate Action Commission would like to say a few things.
Yes, thank you. Chair Morrell.
Thank you, Mayor Farrar Rivas and councilmembers. A pleasure to be here, though you may find the next few minutes, as I do, a bit awkward. That is to say, since this climate action work plan has been devised, we've had some very important developments associated with a program called Green Links. And that program is offering the Climate Action Commission and our colleagues in the Planning Commission, our colleagues in the Parks Recreation and Open Space Commission, opportunities to move forward successfully with some exciting new developments in Green Links. As a result, I put together some notes for you to consider this evening with this recommendation. I have not cleared these remarks, of course, with the commission officially. I have consulted with two my fellow commissioners, no more than two for obvious reasons. And we will present them for your consideration, if I may. I'm concerned that the language proposed for approval tonight does not specifically endorse effective action on Green Links. While we've come far in discussing the topic in recent months at many different sessions, often with a great deal of enthusiasm, the absence of clear implementation commitments at this point, from the point of view of the Climate Action Commission, is indeed troubling. We need specific language to deliver on what the city council has already approved. This includes develop effective green infrastructure policy, explore Green Links as a citywide network, support ongoing climate strategy implementation, including key elements of our Green Links strategy. Not just planning, but real phased implementation as possible, given budget constraints and so on. This does not move quickly, but it must move forward as best it can in these difficult times. Unfortunately, the work plan submitted by staff for council approval tonight leaves out some of these key council Green Links goals. They must be inserted explicitly, in my personal opinion, before council action to approve these plans officially for us to move forward. So let's be explicit about assigning responsibility for Green Links implementation across the board. To summarize, the council's adopted 2025 goals already support this work. They include develop green infrastructure policies and initiatives, support the Climate Commission to implement the climate action strategies adopted in 2024, 25, and other sustainability initiatives, consideration of establishment of Green Links. They all point to the need for green infrastructure tools, like a greenway overlay, urban forestry policy, and green street standards. Yes, this is all rather complex and a bit complicated. Who said it would be easy? I can assure you that my Climate Action Commission is ready to support such changes. And from my personal discussions with my colleagues on the Planning Commission and the PROS Commission, I'm confident they too are eager to support these city actions too. Thanks for your attention and I would hope we could defer action on this recommendation this evening until we can amend the climate action strategies to adequately include the Green Links policies already fundamentally approved by your council. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
So to clarify, the general plan itself would actually encompass all of the policy development around the green links and green infrastructure. And so that's why we created a general plan ad hoc, was to have discussions around those components. So it's not very specific in what each ad hoc is going to look at. But a lot of those are already included in the climate action strategies. And so with the general plan also, we'll identify other resources and policy documents that will need to be developed in the future to help implement potential policies around these as directed or adopted by city council. So that's how those aspects would move forward. As far as the climate action strategies, the climate action, the sustainability component that would be throughout the general plan potentially would also identify with city council's approval, the creation of an actual climate action plan. That climate action plan can include a lot of different aspects. The idea behind adopting the climate action strategies previously was to get us something started on while we do our general plan. And then from there, look at how we wanted to do a climate action plan and move forward with that. So that's some clarity on some of the, where we were going with policy direction.
All right, questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Wellender.
If I could call the Community Development Director back. If I heard correctly, then, the idea of beginning to spend some more focused time on the the Green Links concept, it's impractical to do it before it gets folded into the updated general plan?
So when, everybody has a different idea of what that looks like and different implementation components. So what we would look at is our open space element and really look at that and recreation and look at that level of detail of what's being provided in a draft. And then also where where do we want a little bit more information or a little bit more focus on that policy development? So a lot of the questions have been the where and how we're going to focus on where we're going to put these. Some of that requires potentially more study and some of it is just, let's map it. Let's see what's out there. Let's present that, create the policies that would be in a general plan and identify what we want to do, use for implementation tools. An example of this could be low impact development and really focusing on stormwater improvements and actually providing detailed examples that people could implement in their own residential projects. That level of detail doesn't go into a general plan, but that could be something that is identified in the general plan to happen. In the the Green Links component, we are going to talk more also with the the Green Links and open space, parks and recreation. We talked about, you know, how does that overlap with our active transportation plan? Are there gaps or other considerations that we want to make sure are incorporated into this this element? The other aspect is we are working on the canopy assessment and also our tree inventory. And that information could help a future development of really lining up where we want to make sure that we're putting in the infrastructure around the Green Links. We know general vicinity areas and key resources, but maybe there's other information that we can pull to actually identify the best place for those.
Follow up on that. So in terms of identifying the opportunities, do you feel confident that our consultant is able to fold in what has been expressed in quite a bit of detail by a variety of members of the community in terms of Green Links? Or is it something where there'd be value in continuing to generate input and and some thoughts from the community that then influences the consultant? Because I'm, I'm, I'm curious on that.
So I think what helps is to have that draft document and then let's see what the feedback is. And if we need to have another community meeting, just focused on some recommendations around that. So remember, during all this process, when we have the elements ready, we're going to make them available to the public. We're going to have the general plan task force meetings about them. I'm going to bring them to climate action, to PROS, to Planning Commission, to have discussions around them, to provide recommendations as a commission. And then also during the ad hoc, you know, review process is, the idea is that these ad hocs have the more focus and they can provide that and start that conversation with the commission at a public here, you know, at a public meeting. Because we don't want to do anything behind the scenes. I want to make sure that all of this is in the public and these discussions happen. If we need to have like a community workshop vignette kind of development, then we can do that with staff. And then we can help provide that information so that the second draft that comes out, that would be under review by Planning Commission for their recommendation to you, would incorporate that information. But again, just making sure that there's that high level, general plan is high level. And some of the the recommendations that have come out are very specific, lower development related improvements that really aren't going to be written out to that level of specificity in a general plan.
So kind of like the the forest inventory, the canopy inventory and the timeline. I guess one of the question comes up that, you know, we're going to, we're out six months. We may be out what could be another 12 months in order to get this thing done. In the meantime, I think that there's a sentiment in the community, we'd like to get something done. And and it just seems that it would be nice to parallel and be able to demonstrate or have something move forward as if something could be completed. Because you speak very accurately in terms of of the sequence. Unfortunately, when you add up the sequence, it just another year falls.
So let's get some more questions out and because we're not in discussion yet. So we're beginning to go into discussion instead of questions. So we can, I just want to get, because other people have questions too. Okay, all right. So Councilmember Gurney, did you have a question? I thought you had a question. Oh, no. Anybody else have a question? Yes.
My question is, green the link, this kind of concept, if any, in the budget issue related in the future, if we were to carry that out?
So again, that is where the general, I know I keep saying the general plan. We could, there's a lot of different ways to implement the concept of Green Links. There's a lot of things that were presented recently to Planning Commission. All of those individual documents cost money to prepare and to create. Where do we want to start? Where do, where do we want to make sure that we are looking at? For me, I am a planner, so I am, you know, more in that mindset is I want to know more before making decisions. And we have certain things that we've already identified in our current general plan or, you know, in our parks, looking at improvements to parks. So there are activities. It may not be very specific in the sense of what maybe some people are thinking of, like the Green Links. My question is, are we talking a physical improvement? Because we're also looking at cool corridors and looking at, you know, doing a cool corridor in a tree, you know, planting around our trails. We already have things on the books that we're looking at around a lot of these concepts. And so it's a matter of pulling it all together into this plan so that we can identify funding needs and then funding asks. I mean, I could do a shortlist of funding asks for this budget cycle if we want something small. But, you know, those, those are the things that kind of help through this general plan process to kind of understand. All right, if we want to get to here, what are all those little things that we need to do to get there? If we want to do citywide, if we want one specific project in one specific location, then that's a different conversation that we can have.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, so what I would like to do is to go to public comment, then come back for a discussion. And so, and and one of the things that I just want to comment, we are talking about the CAC work plan. And and as much as I really love all of these different ideas that are coming up and want things to get implemented fast, I want us to focus on, I don't want this, you know, I'm concerned this discussion just becomes about this one project versus the overall work plan for the CAC. So so what I'd like to do now is open it up for public comment and then we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Do we have any public comment? No, we don't. So now we can bring it back to the council for discussion. So comments, and now let's take some other comments and I'll get back to Vice Mayor Wellender to see if you have additional comments.
Well, I think this is a pretty detailed and aggressive plan. I mean, there, you know, we talked about what's not in it, but let's talk for a second about what is in it. I mean, expanding publicly accessible EV charging, establish a downtown shuttle, banning fossil fuel gas stations, looking at policies against any future drive-through restaurants. I know one that's possibly looking at one. Installation of PV solar. I mean, this is a very aggressive and rightly so look at what is arguably one of the, you know, the greatest challenges we face as a planet. So it's hard for me to see, you know, I mean, there's a lot in this to do. And I mean, I think we'd be, we'd be doing great if we could do, you know, some of this stuff. I I tend to agree on the the concept of the the Green Links. I see that as much more part of the general plan because it involves so many things. And I like this because it really is zeroing in on on the climate goals. A lot of people look at Green Links as a climate issue, but some people look at it as a recreation issue, you know, or or some other issue. So right now I like this because it's focused on on sort of the charge of the committee. And even even that, I think there's a lot in here that if we brought all of these forward, it would arouse a lot of discussion in the community about some of these things. So I'm happy with with it is, how it is and will support it. I think that we should continue to have the ongoing discussion of the Green Links as part of our general plan. But part of it is also to determine, because it's so, it's like, just in the word itself, it's it's linking, it's everything. So it it seems like it's going to cross into many other aspects of what we do, including the budget. But also there was parts of it that had to do with, you know, acquiring access and to different properties and so forth, which is a big deal. We start saying, everyone says it's great. And then we say, okay, yeah, well, we're going to walk by your house or your business. Maybe wait a minute, you know, they might have another conversation about it. So I think it's done better in that, in that general conversation. So but I'm, I'm, I think this is, there's very specific and I commend the committee for working so hard on it. And there's a lot of, we're going to have some very spirited discussions. And there's a lot of, we're going to have some very spirited discussions since we, if we adopt this, we're going to have a lot, a lot to do. So I'm happy with this as it is. Thank you.
Other comments from our council? Yes, Vice Mayor Wellender.
In terms of adoption, when I look at specifics like the banning of drive throughs, I'm saying, is that something that if I'm reading this correctly, it'll go back, I mean, an ordinance would be proposed or go to planning, planning will evaluate, they're going to vote on, and then they will be coming to us for adoption. Is that the sequence?
There we go.
Yes.
We think so, yes.
Yes.
You can come back. I'm sure I have another question for you.
My show.
No, I don't.
Darn.
So I do have a comment to, oh, go ahead. No, you go first. No, you're on.
Basically, you know, I think, you know, I look at it in the detail. It is very comprehensive. A lot of the work is done. Yeah, we, it is not in the perfect and also I pretty much for sure this is at least in the two year or three years, yeah, even in the five years and the map out and in the future. I I totally understand I will support.
So and I just want to point out a few things. When I'm looking at T one in here, under T one, it says, prepare a master plan to improve and expand bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. So I think of that as part of green links in my mind or supportive of it. And then it says, connect the Sonoma City Trail to the plaza. Enhance pedestrian and bicycle access to the plaza area by connecting Sonoma City Trail to the plaza, blah, blah, blah. Increase downtown bicycle parking. So once we connect it, then people have a place to park. Create cool corridors for bicycle and pedestrian trails. So I I that's T one. When you look at C two, we find more that is, to me, moving this, okay, why does not, why does C come after G? I'm, you don't have to answer that for me. Just wondering. But so there was increased planting of trees. Assess and expand urban tree shade canopy. Install green pocket forests. So I think within this work plan, there are elements that are supporting a lot of the work that people would want to have happen in regards to what the overall picture is for green links. And it is, and I've had a lot of discussions about this and I I think I finally understand it. The general plan will create the basis for supporting the green links plan. And hopefully some of these things I agree to. We want to see some things happen sooner or later, but we don't want the whole, we have the general plan update to do. There's so much that we have to do within that that goes beyond, you know, parks and rec and, you know, there's environmental justice, which hopefully that the language will not be banned from our lexicon. But there's so many things that we have to address. I think what we have to be careful of is putting the, the, like, like Jennifer is trying to explain, and I'm trying to say it in plain language, the detail ahead of the big plan and in the update in the general plan. We want to make sure that the maps are there so that as you're moving forward, it's kind of like, yes, we want to create a road, but someone has gone through and assessed whether or not do we need a tunnel here? Do we have to use dynamite in that tunnel to get through here? Has done that first before you, before you're actually saying we're taking the road this direction. So I think that that's what it is. We're trying, you know, it's like within it, let's build in the general plan what's going to support the building of these connectors across the city, which I think most people seem to be quite in favor of. And that it does, I think, to Councilwoman Lowe's point, is that it touches so many different areas. I I see it really as a big economic development area. And so that it's not just the CAC that is doing this plan around it. So but I would accept, I think what we've got here, I agree too, is like, when I read it and then I went, my goodness, this is a lot of, lot, it's a lot. It is a lot. And I think it's going to take a lot of work to do all of this. And the only other thing I will just say, I would prefer, I'm a little uncomfortable changing, not changing this without this full CAC here, you know, and I know you've talked to a few people, I understand that, but I just think that this is what the CAC has presented to us. And so I would want to follow that process of us approving this or not and without significant changes.
Yeah, I I agree what you are saying. And also I think, you know, we are grateful for a lot of the work done by all the local community, nonprofit, and including ecology center and other environments, you know, environment tests, great effort. So we had to like to say, this is a climate commission. I had a better to say that a future action commission. A lot of the thing, we are not a concern for the time be, we focus on, you know, the future. When we prepare, updating our general plan, and I pretty much for sure if it's climate and action, yeah, it's kind of, you know, direction for the future, that is.
Other comments before we ask for a motion?
I have been sitting, listening to a lot of the comments and I agree with a lot as far as the interconnectivity of of various strategic goals here or strategies. Again, I'm concerned that the timeline is going to continue to be used as the tool by which we 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 can't do that because it's got, it's going to be addressed in the general plan. And we can't do this because it might influence that. There are some things that I think can be done that's not rocket science, that doesn't have to wait six months for a tree inventory or a canopy thing. And I'm just advocating that we get some, I get some assurance, I guess, because you guys may not be in line with me on it, that we're not going to wait another year. We're not going to, you know, last year we didn't plant one tree, yet trees were important in the previous year. And I just would love to see, again, the idea that we harness some of this community involvement, this enthusiasm, making sure that we don't continue to beat them down by the schedule that says we we just aren't able to get to it yet because we're waiting for this or that. That's my two cents and I I realize I'm but one vote, but at this point, I would love more time to evaluate this program. So I would not be voting yes.
Yes, Councilmember Gurney.
Ms. Gates, the significance of the blue italicized notes on the work plan?
They were voted as priorities by the Climate Action Commission. So a lot of these were identified through a process with the prior climate coordinator. And then we specifically called out ones that were priorities to the commission itself. And those were italicized in blue.
I mean, thank you. I want to make sure you got your steps in tonight.
Oh, I have another question for you. You get back there. And then so another approach would be, we accept this work plan. And and if the Climate Action Commission were to want to add something to this work plan, then this could come, could this come back? Oh, yeah. I mean, and but I mean, and that's the discussion there and then that happens there. I mean, I would like to approve this work plan so that the Climate Action Commission can get on with the work that is here, which is significant. But it seems like there's a way if, you know, you know, in looking at kind of the idea that maybe we get one thing done, what is the priority that we could get, get, get done around trees, for example, that that could come back to the work plan if it's not in here already. But I think it kind of is. It says install green forests anyway.
So it's a couple of different ways. So the planet, the work plan, again, just taking a step back, the whole document is our climate action strategies that you already adopted.
Yeah.
The work plan is because we focused on everything last time. We decided that we were going to just focus on some key things, things that were ready to go or that needed more attention. And so that's why we minimized our ad hoc groups and so that we could really focus in. And so the bullet points that are in the staff report that are here are the ones that we had identified as really we want to focus. And that's not just the ad hocks or the commissioners, but also staff for the implementation of these strategies, right? There's only so much time in the day. And so these were some of those key components. The ad hoc committees were developed to focus on those key areas that need more time and effort, so therefore more people to contribute and in that review. So there's not, in the actual plan, the strategies, there's not a lot of, there's no funding. So that's part of it, right, is identifying funding. And then also just physical improvements, there's just not any that were actually identified that wouldn't require funding. So that's what we're looking at. We did the installation of the bike racks, things like that, that met both the goals of city council, public works, as well as, you know, the climate action initiative. So we'll always continue to look at the, all of it. It's just, these were the ones that the commission identified as priority for right now.
So for example, the, the, which is in process, right, for us to do the tree canopy assessment or the tree assessment. Once that is done, then you could actually withdraw from that a plan to go look for funding. So, you know, and I understand this is one of the issues is if we need funding, you need a plan before you get to the funding and we need this assessment before we get to the plan. I'm just trying to sort sparse out all of these kind of, so that people understand the process. So then again, with that, I would still say.
We we did talk about this topic too, the greenways and the green and blue infrastructure at our Climate Action Commission meeting that night and talked about how that would be incorporated into that general plan discussion in the sense of how it plays out in the development of policy. There was no specific project aspect.
So at this point, I think what we're going, I'm going to ask if we have a motion.
Yes. I I just want to clarify that we're not, you know, to the vice mayor's question earlier, this does not mean any of these things are going to happen. They have to go through a process and maybe that process is too long and maybe it's not. But, you know, I'm going to move this, but that doesn't mean I'm going to necessarily vote yes when something, you know, we'll have the opportunity to look at each of these items individually.
Yeah.
To decide whether or not we want to adopt them as policies. But I do want to honor the work of the commission and move this forward so that they can get on with it and it doesn't take any length of time. I do think that people can come back with other things, but at some point you have to ask, what is your priority? And, you know, this is a lot. And and then is there something that comes off the plate? Because that's a lot of work for people to do. So I'm just saying that as a caveat if if and when things do come back. But that being said, and I shouldn't speak and then make a motion, but I just am going to, I move approval of the work plan of the Climate Action Commission.
Second.
All right. City Clerk Bar, could we take a roll call? Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
I'm sorry, who's that?
Councilmember Gurney?
Oh, yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
No.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Farrar Rivas?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries for one. All right. Thank you all. A very informative discussion. I am also looking forward to that first tree. We all have a big party, park. Oh, yes, now, oh, Jennifer's back. Here we go. So now we're going to item nine point two, and this is the Planning Commission annual work plan.
All right, so same idea except with the planning commission. So again, this is a work plan identified to set priorities for ordinance and policy amendments and any new items. So staff does recommend that planning commission annually adopt a work plan. And in April of 2025, staff presented the status update on the prior work plan. And then the planning commission identified the work plan for the next year, also taking into consideration city council goals as well as our ongoing needs to complete. Whoa, that was really small. Sorry about that. So it's in your staff report, it is an attachment. So also what we're focusing on is going to be the general plan update. I mean, it is an ongoing, you're going to hear about it for the next year for sure. So with that, we are going to have an ad hoc committee and that ad hoc committee will be focused again on looking at all aspects of the elements. And then we'll be presenting thoughts, recommendations and discussion points along with staff on, to the commission as a whole, for their review and recommendations. We also are looking at doing, begin doing the code updates. So as we're going through this general plan elements, if there's certain things that really need code updates that help explain things further, example, this will be the Sonoma mixed use that's being proposed, as well as development standards around how are we looking at doing duplexes, triplexes and quads in single family residential zones? So all of those require more level of detail and understanding. So the idea being that after the general plan is adopted with certain things, that we'll have a code that will follow up with that. So there won't be another large gap in time as we develop the code. It'll also help provide that clarity that keeps being asked for around, well, what does that look like? Because again, general plans are policy and a code is actually going to be more of that specificity. So what are those specific uses? What are the development standards? How do we develop on the site? Those types of things are in our development code. And so that's the idea behind it. So that's what that ad hoc is going to focus on and identify. Also, the housing element implementation ongoing. We have a lot of things that we need to get done this year. We presented the annual progress report to you and highlighted some of those accomplishments, but also some of the things that we're going to be focusing on. As we all know, state laws continually to change and part of that is that we need to update all of our ordinances to stay compliant. And so that is something that we are undertaking right now as well. Around affordable housing, we are going to have an ad hoc that's going to focus on the update of the Affordable Housing Fund Policy and Implementation Program Guidelines. So that ad hoc committee is going to focus on that and provide basically policy guidance. City council, of course, would be the end approver and adopter of that guidance of where we can, what are the resources that are available to us to help feed that fund? And so I was asked to ask you if, in your discussions, if you have any thoughts that you would like to share, that commission would be happy to hear any other comments around these topics that are within their goals. And then around signs and display and advertising, we are looking at updating all of Title 18, bringing it into Title 19, and doing a complete rework of what that looks like. Currently, right now, pretty much all signs have to go through a design review process and we're looking at streamlining that process, setting. a design review process, and we're looking at streamlining that process, setting standards. And if you're compliant with those standards, you would go through an administrative process. If you want to build outside of those standards, then you would go through a different process. That would be discretionary. So, we're hoping to finish that this year. And then, also, continuing to work on our permit streamlining. This year, we'll be bringing forward a streamlining effort for our design review, historic preservation process, and then also some additional design review updates. And then, vacant structures and demolition by neglect was brought up to our more pressing issues this year. It was on the as time determines previously, but has been identified as a priority, and an ad hoc committee was formed around that as well. And so, this is staff's recommendation and planning commissions to approve their proposed 2025 Planning Commission work plan. And with that, staff concludes their presentation. And Chair Donbok is here.
All right. Do we have any questions? Excuse me. Yes. Councilwoman Lowe?
Just pursuant to the adoption of the, the fire zones, is that going to be implemented in some way in the Planning Commission policies?
So, we will start looking at some potential changes in the code updates as part of that ad hoc committee, of things that we need to, to change, either based on what we find out, more information through the studies that are going to be completed around the evacuation routes, or also around the defensible space and landscaping guidelines.
And which ad hoc does that come under?
The general plan.
Thank you.
So, that's under the general plan. And, and I think, you know, just based on our last discussion, you know, that, that's apropos. I mean, because we're talking about, I mean, I mean, in one sense, we're talking about, well, we gotta not have, you know, more than 12 square feet, I think he said, of vegetation. And then, on the other hand, we're talking about building a forest, you know? It's like, I'm going, my, I'm going a little nuts here with, are we building a forest? Are we clearing the forest? Are we, you know, I mean, is this, you know, are the rocks in front of Second Street West an eyesore, or is this a perfect example of what we need? I mean, we're, so, I mean, but, but honestly, think about it. I mean, we're really, you know, we have to figure out what it is we're doing. And I think that, you know, I like this plan. I'm definitely going to support it. But I think that that's where some of those issues will be resolved. And I think it's important work, and I think it will, you know, lend itself to assist in some of the other things that we want to do. But we have to decide if we're, you know, how we're going to build things in, in, in these high fire zone areas, and what, what that's going to look like. And so, that's going to be a big, a big part of what we do. And if we're going to have green links through there, you know, maybe, I don't know what those, how green they're gonna be, you know? So, we'll have to figure that out. Anyway, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Affordable housing is up in the priority. And I'm so glad, and one of your work, and trying to find other incentive, you know, policy. That is good. Another thing is, I would like to remind you is, an issue in a project, and you proved, and never forget, you know, suggested by an arena, regional and housing needs allocation, you know? I, I, I wonder, you know, because I look at the numbers and the last time, you know, we do have the regular price, you know, almost, you know, more, and, you know, I didn't see, you know, proportionally, and meet affordable housing, the numbers. But maybe the next project, we have the more. I just want to remind you, yeah, should be proportionally. That is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I...
Questions?
I don't have a question. We're going to do public comment now. Thank you. Jennifer, you helped me go to the next step. Do we have any public comment on the Planning Commission work plan? Seeing none, we're going to bring it back to the council for discussion. So, I just have an overall comment. Did you have a comment, Ron? You removed your microphone there. So, I have an overall, because I do think, you know, we are in unusual times, and that, you know, it, within the general plan update, it's the place where we need to be able to, through that, hopefully, the message comes out from that, how we're balancing all of these priorities that we have, and many of them, which in some ways conflict with each other. So, economic development, development of housing, evacuation, you know, and, you know, yeah, we can have more trees, trees to have defensible area around them. You know, so it's like all of that. But that is a good discussion of like, I hear canopies, I go, I don't want them to touch, right? You know, because of fire, right? So, all of that. So, hopefully, the, within the general plan update, we can have some finalization of kind of these very bigger topic issues of the direction that we're going, and then be able to implement all these things in accordance with that. But we need to do that. We do need to do that first, because we have a lot of really big issues confronting us. And we need to be able to figure out how we're going to be able to balance many of those issues that in some ways conflict with each other. Goals we want to see happen, but may conflict with other, other issues. So, do I have, if there is no discussion, do I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
I second.
We will take a roll call.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Farrar Rivas?
Yes, and I, I do appreciate these priorities. I like the way they've been done. Thank you very much. Moving on. Now, we are moving to appointments to the Planning Commission. So, just so folks know, when some of the, these are the appointments that are made to the Planning Commission with the full city council. We'll be voting on those. And so, I'm going to turn this over to Rebecca Barr, our city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Farrar Rivas. So, this item tonight is actually addressing not only the at-large position on the Planning Commission, but also the vacant seat on the Sonoma County Library Commission, and the alternate position on the Sonoma Valley Community Advisory Commission. Each of these, as you said, are voted on by a majority vote of the council. The, taking the Planning Commission at-large member first, there's a vacant... No, there's, there's no PowerPoint. I'm sorry. The, the member of the Planning Commission had a recent resignation, so the current alternate's been sitting in that seat since that time. It can be filled by either a city resident or a valley resident. I don't know if you, you may remember in recent changes to the commission policy, you made the decision that at least one of those positions is required to be a valley member. And the current at-large member is that, that she is a valley resident. So, that, so this position can be filled by either. The second ones, then that's a two-year term, these at-large, at-large position. The second one is the Library Commission, and again, it is appointed by the commission as a whole. It's a city's representative, and it's appointed to a four-year term based on the commission's bylaws. And then, lastly, is the Sonoma Valley Community Advisory, and that's that alternate position. And it also serves a four-year term. One thing to note is, I'll put a plug out, we've been advertising for it, but there's one position on the Sonoma Valley Community Advisory Commission, that's the emeritus position. And so, the individual has to be, had been a previous member of the commission to be appointed. So, I'll put that plug out there. My, we've been advertising, but we've had no one apply. So, we did advertise the different positions and received the following applications. Therese Nugent for the Planning Commission, she is the current alternate. Kimberly Taylor for the Sonoma County Library Commission, Stephen Latimer for the Planning Commission, and Adam Ross for the Sonoma Community Advisory Commission. And just as note, if the city council were to appoint Therese Nugent to the at-large position this evening, then the alternate would be vacant, and the council could choose to appoint someone, one of the other applicants to the position. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Yes. Councilmember Gurney?
So, would Stephen Latimer be eligible for the alternate?
Yes.
I'm, my PDF will not open on my site. Can you open it up so we can see it? Oh, there it is. Thank you very much. I can't remember all these names at once. So, let's start one at a time. Let's go to, we have one application for the Planning Commission. Oh, we have two. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, we have two. So, we have Stephen Latimer, and we have Therese Nugent. And so, let's focus on that first, in regards to, do we have a recommendation of who would be joining the Planning Commission and who would be the alternate?
Well, I'd like to recommend Therese be moved to the regular position, and then the alternate be filled by Stephen Latimer.
Second. I want to see that.
All right. So, we have a motion in a second?
Public comment?
Public comment.
Would you like to do public, well, yeah, you have a motion?
Let's do one at a time, because it's, it's hard to do all of them at once. So, do we have any public comment? Seeing none, moving forward. Take a roll call, vote on that?
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Farrar Rivas?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
And thank you, Mrs. Nugent, for coming to and sitting through the whole meeting.
For the whole meeting, yeah.
Also, congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah. And I understand, as an alternate, you, you were very seldom acting as an alternate, and were usually on the actual seated, replacing someone else. So, thank you very much. All right. So, now, we're going to move on to the Sonoma County Library Commission, Kimberly Taylor. And I was just going to ask our councilwoman Lowe, if you wanted to say anything about Kimberly?
No, I just, I've been trying to get someone to apply, or many people to apply for, for this. And every public meeting I go to, I've been putting in a plug, and Kimberly Taylor came up to me after a presentation that I did on the redistricting thing. And I'm thrilled that she applied. And, you know, it's hard to find people to want to volunteer their time, and I appreciate it. She seems like she has a great background for this.
Great. So, on this, do we have a motion? Oh, public comment. Thank you. All right. Okay. So, no public comment, and we will move forward. Do I have a motion?
I move that we appoint Kimberly Taylor to the Sonoma County Library Commission.
Second.
Yes. Shall we take a roll call?
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Farrar Rivas?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
All right. And now, for Sonoma Valley Community Advisory Commission, Adam, Adam Ross is the only applicant. Do we have someone on the panel, a council member, that would like to speak to Adam Ross? Because it's not, he's not someone I am familiar with.
I, I'll, I think I know Adam Ross. I believe he worked at one time under the oversight of our current city manager up in Santa Rosa. He's married to a, a woman that lives here in Sonoma, was raised here in Sonoma. And if he can put up with, or city manager, I think he can put up with S V C A C.
All right. So, do we have a motion here?
I move that we accept Adam Ross for the Sonoma Valley Community Advisory Commission.
Do we have a...
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Public comment. Yes, Robert. This is your favorite part of meetings, these commissions, I see.
Give me two minutes. You need six. Robert Demmler, First Street West. I want to pick up on the very sweet words that Mayor Farrar Rivas said about Francis. "I'm not a Catholic. I'm a lapsed Episcopalian and former seminarian. And I'm not sure I believe in heaven, but if there was no heaven, I'm sure God would make an exception for Francis." And I wrote a, you know, all of you know, I bombarded the city with poems in the IT. I wrote a couple of short words this morning, and I think I can remember. "A light for love and justice went out today. A lone soul traveled home." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. What a great way to close meetings. So, now, at this point, do we have any public comment in regards to, we're not, we, yeah?
We, I'd still like to move the alternate...
That's what we're doing right now. I'm asking for public comment around that.
A little distracted by the poetry. I, I've been having a hard time focusing on trees, no trees, poems and whatever.
I just let him go through. Thank you very much. So, now, if there's no public comment in regards to, we're ending this meeting with a bang. Can we go with that?
Would you like to do a roll call? Or the motion on the floor?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wellender?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Farrar Rivas?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
And we do not have a public comment period, but we did, we're able to end with a lovely little palm.
Can we appoint to the alternate to the Planning Commission?
We did.
We did it? We did both. Okay.
We did both.
All right.
I know. Yeah, it's been, it's, lots going on. It's kind of fun. All right, here we go. Yes. All right. All right. You know what I meant to do? I am going to...